Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Mr. Fosson, would you call the roll, please?
Tuchel.
Here.
Tatten.
Here.
Showman.
Here.
Crowell.
Here.
Patrick.
Here.
Neal.
Here.
Gray.
Here.
Ames.
Here.
Thank you. We all rise with the flag to the right.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on our agenda is the approval of the journal for the minutes from previous meetings. We have a motion to approve the minutes. Mr. Tuchel, second. Second by Mr. Fosson. Do you need a roll following that motion?
Yes. Tuchel.
Yes.
Tatten.
Yes.
Showman.
Yes.
Crowell.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Ames.
Yes.
And the minutes are approved. Reports of committees. Mr. Tuchel.
Thank you, President Elanardo. The finance committee has two items on tonight's agenda. Item two, which provides for the adoption of the post issuance compliance policies and procedures for tax exempt obligations, and Auditor Feeney will report on that during this presentation. And item seven, to appropriate and transfer the sum of $650 to cover the balance or cost of a new truck bed or used within a street construction. The total amount for that truck was $21,070, and that was $650 short of what it should have been, and that's a reason for this legislation. And that's the appropriate time of request, but we waive the three reading when we pass out tonight. Items eight, nine, and 10 are not mine, however, they were, they wound up on the agenda as a result of the bond council. And I'd like to waive Rule 5A to get those on the agenda tonight. They're not my committee, however, I think they belong to three different other council members that will report on during their presentations. I'll make that motion.
Second motion on the motion, Pat. Thank you, Patrick. I seconded the motion, and we'll have a roll. May everyone turn your names.
Tuchel.
Yes.
Tatten.
Yes.
Showman.
Yes.
Crowell.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Ames.
Yes.
So the motion to waive the 5A rule has been approved. Does that complete your, does that complete your report?
That concludes my, thank you.
Yes. Councilwoman Gray.
Thank you, President Elanardo. Thank you. The Human Resources Committee recently met on Thursday, the 5th of February, and we had three assignments. One assignment carried over from last year, which was Legislation 14-168, which was a request for legislation to update the City Ordinance 80-12, which establishes the rate of pay and other economic benefits for nonclassified employees as well as classified but management level employees for the City of Chillicothe. During the course of the discussion, the committee, along with present officials as well as other council members, came to the conclusion that we needed to separate the intent of the legislation, and we will await the separation for that, for the two pay that we talked about for that committee. And that will be presented once it goes to the Law Director's Office at the next council meeting. Legislative Legislation Request T. 15-04, a request for legislation to adopt the part-time pay increase as negotiated in the most recent contract that passed me. It has been also sent or will be sent to the Law Director's Office once we get the verification on the pension pickup percentage. And the third is the Legislation Request T. 15-06, a request for legislation to appropriate funding for the EEO administrative position for the remainder calendar year 2015. It also has been sent to the Law Director's Office for creation of legislation, and we are awaiting the Law Director's creation of that piece of legislation, and I'll let her report on that when she comes to her report. And that concludes our, concludes our report. Thank you.
Other committee reports. Mr. Fosson.
Safety Service has two items on tonight's agenda. Item number five is at first reading, and it is to accept and appropriate $1,000 in grant bonds received from the David Mead Massey Trust for the Chillicothe Fire Department for the purchase of materials used in schools. Because this money is coming in as a form of a grant, costs the city nothing, and benefits our schools, I'm going to ask that we waive the three read rule at the appropriate time. Item number six is at first reading, and it is to authorize and direct the Safety Service Director to advise for bids and enter into contracts for the annual supplies and maintenance and repair of equipment required by the city for fiscal year 2015. This is an annual request, and I will at the appropriate time ask that we waive the three read rule so that the Safety Service Director can move on these actions. Thank you.
Thank you. This is Patrick.
Thank you, President Elanardo. I'll go ahead and report on item number eight. This started out as Utilities Committee Assignment Number 14-162, and we were to determine the payback period for the Adena water upgrades. And in the meeting that we held to determine that payback period, we discussed some of the projects that were going to be completed in 2015, and very quickly, one was to repair or replace the roof on the water plant for $150,000, rebuild of the low service pump, and add a variable frequency drive to it for $65,000, to service two of our water wells, that's $80,000, and we set aside $100,000 to repay, replace part of the water lines in Hesswood Hills. After the committee reviewed all these capital expenditures, including the next projected five years, we decided to go with a five-year payback on this note. The estimated payment will be approximately $520,000 per year, and I would ask the auditor to add more if he wishes. And I think we will be asking to waive the three read rule at the appropriate time? We will. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any other reports? Mr. Tatten.
Thank you, President Elanardo. The Engineering Committee has two items on them. Number one, at third reading, is to authorize installation of a street light at the intersection of Johnson and Keller Road. And number three, it's up for a third reading, too, and that's to permit the Ohio Department of Transportation to perform grid inspections within the city limits of Chillicothe. That concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Tuchel.
Thank you, Mrs. Elanardo. I have just realized that there's an item up here for Parks and Rec. Mr. Bonner is no longer a member of council. He submitted his resignation, and good for Bill, he's done a great job over the years as a council. This Parks and Rec item is to accept and appropriate an insurance claim payment of $19,655.24 for damage to the roof of the Donald M. Smith Memorial Pool Building. And I believe since that money is in hand, we'll waive the three read rule and pass that legislation tonight. And again, thanks, Bill Bonner, for your years of service, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Other committee reports. This is me.
Thank you, President Elanardo. The, my committee has one item. It's item nine. It's to authorize the issuance of not to exceed $320,000 for the refuse vehicle acquisition bonds, and that's to pay the cost of acquiring two garbage trucks. And this is just a annual request to issue the bonds, and I think that the city auditor will explain it a little bit further in his report, but it's, it's a bond question and spreading that payment out over five years. That ends my report. Thank you.
Other reports? Seeing none, then we'll move to reports of officials. Mayor Everson.
Thank you, President Elanardo, and I would like to echo Councilman Tuchel's sentiments on welcoming you aboard, and best of luck to you in the remainder of this term. I also like to, at this point in time, thank Eric Reinhardt and Councilman Bonner for their service to the city, and I enjoyed working with them. Thanks so much. We had a, an issue with United Wake Up Today where they are asking some volunteers to do some community service on April 23rd. They're calling it the Day of Caring, and are asking for projects to, to be worked on with the volunteers that they're assembling. So I sent an email out to council and to my staff with some ideas for projects that they've worked on. They do have some projects that they have online. This is much like the Make a Different State at the Quanis does annually now. So if you have any projects that you have in mind that would be nice for some volunteers to work on, please do turn an email to me on that same one that I sent out, and I'll get that to Kathy Whalen at the United Way. Some of you already have, and I appreciate that. We have, I have a meeting this Thursday with the Litter family. We've been talking about the land donation on the north side of Mulberry Street and Riverside, northeast side. That, those kind of obligations to the city don't come along every day. I know that there's some discussion on the buildings on that facility, the Cold Temple or responsibilities and whatnot. I think we're close to an end of what we, how we want to modify that, that legislation to accept that, but want to be certain that I have all the facts when I step into that meeting on Thursday morning. So, Mrs. Ames, if I can get some final word with you on offline here with what we regard that council's concerned with on that, so I can take that to the meeting, or if you want to accompany to meet, to that meeting, we'll get this finalized and get that page turned. Lastly, December 1st of last year, I sent a, an email to concerned members of council regarding a Robert Davis property that was asking to be deannexed from the city. It was originally annexed into the city in 2004, I believe, when the bike path was being planned and rotted through there, and it was annexed into the city from the county with the intent of using that parcel of land, which is just bare land behind this gentleman's home. He utilized that for the bike path. Bike path deviated from his property, and his property was not used. His house is in the county, his property that he pays taxes on is in the city, and he'd like to combine that up. I put out an email then saying if anybody didn't have any problems with having him be deannexed from the city, so that all his property resides in the county, to get back. There was some discussion there. This was tossed around back in council in the late 2000s, and never came to some resolution. So I'd like to bring some resolution to that issue, and I think maybe put a committee assignment together to involve all of council in that decision. So giving land back from the city is not something we typically do, but I don't think it makes complete sense here to keep his vacant property in the city and his house in the county. So I'll be putting forth the legislative request to accommodate that wish from the citizens, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor Everson. I'll begin.
Thank you, President Elanardo. Welcome. Just touch on some of the legislative items tonight. Item two is the third reading. Essentially, this, in a sense, relates to items eight and nine, and any debt that the city issues, which is tax exempt. It forces us to comply with certain federal tax laws. We discussed these with council members, and I would support your positive affirmative vote tonight. Item number eight, which is the first reading, is something we've discussed quite a bit over the last two years. As everybody will recall, at December 2014, we made the last payment, approximately $1.2 million, on the water plant. And so as that payment was coming off, for the past couple of years, for the Adena project, we've only been paying the interest on the about approximately $2.4 million that we borrowed. And the plan was, and still is, that when the, the debt for the water plant was paid off, that we would aggressively pay down the Adena borrowing. The balance that we struck during committee meeting, instead of making two payments of $1.2 million, and in essence hamstringing our ability to do other necessary projects, was to commit to, still aggressive payment plan, but something that also gave us some flexibility to do some projects that are outstanding that Councilwoman Patrick mentioned. So what we are doing here is, instead of issuing a note, we are doing the same thing that we did last fall, and that is to issue bonds, which commit us to a payment plan, and that payment plan will be over a period of five years. When we rolled the note last year, last February, we included an additional $300,000 to pay for the two garbage trucks that we acquired last year. And so while they're, while the borrowing is for separate purposes, it is a cost-saving mechanism to borrow the money at the same time. So the note for the garbage trucks is also maturing beginning of March. And during our discussions when we purchased the garbage trucks, we also, as Councilwoman Neal mentioned, committed to responsible payment plan. And that payment plan will also be five years. Now, keep in mind that the payments for the water system are obviously coming from the utilities part of the water system, and the payments for the garbage trucks will be coming from the general fund. So the note matures at, I think, March 7th, beginning of March. However, we will have a ratings call with Moody's or Standard and Poor later this week, and then the bonds have to be priced, and it's a bit of a process. It's a little more complicated process than notes, which is why I'm asking for supporting the request to waive the three read rule on both of those. In addition, item 10 is essentially a housekeeping mechanism to bring the two bond issues together, and so it has to be read after the first two. And I would also request to ask for a permanent vote on the waiver of the three read rule on item 10. Anybody have any questions on any of that? They're both items that we talked quite a bit about in the past couple of years, but if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them at this time. Any, oh, sorry.
So we, in order to meet the reissue on said bond by March 7th, we need to waive eight, nine, and 10 three read rules.
That's correct. That's correct. What happens is that the, the notes will mature, we will make principal payments and borrow the remainder and commit to that plan on the 7th, when they go to public sale. In closing, I too would like to thank former Councilman Bonner for his years of service, and especially for his assistance to me when I joined the city, helping me maneuver some of the nuances of council and meetings and committee assignments that I serve under. I really appreciate your help. With that, I conclude my report.
Mr. Feeney. Law Director Rick Hurd.
Thank you, President Elanardo. The Law Director's Office worked very diligently on getting the emergency legislation ready for the levy last week, and as such, things in our office got put on hold so that we could meet that deadline. We are currently working to catch up because, you know, certain things were definitely not done in our office, and we have the information, we have more information to gather to finish the ordinances that were recently submitted to our office. And due to the non-emergency nature of this legislation, we anticipate having these ordinances ready for council's next regularly scheduled meeting.
That brings us to audience participation. Just to review some, some of the guidelines, we are going to ask you to step to the microphone and give your name and address. Council Rule 22 limits each speaker to five minutes and each subject to 15 minutes. Mr. Tuchel, will you be our timekeeper?
I will.
Have we used a sign-in sheet this evening? Is that, we don't need any more?
No.
Okay, then the microphone is open. Is there anyone that would like to address council this evening?
Thank you. Bill Bonner, 393 Palm Road. First of all, I'd like to thank Eric for the nice comments. It really means a lot to me. Secondly, I'd like to welcome Ms. Elanardo from the other side of the bar, so to speak. I know you're doing a great job. You have big shoes to fill for Mr. Reinhardt, but I know you're doing a great job. Just, I could talk a long time, but I will. Just thanks so much to all of you. It's, I've worked with many of you for quite a few years, and it sounds ridiculous to you, but it's been an honor to work with every single one of you. You've made my job so much easier. You really did. You were always professional. We always, I never once felt that we all weren't working for the same thing, and that's to make Chillicothe better. Didn't always agree, and naturally we wouldn't, but it meant a lot to me, and it really made my decision to take my new position very difficult, because I know it would ultimately lead to me having to leave council. And those years have meant a lot to me and my family. We will always look back and treasure those times when I was on council. I think when it was all said and done, I worked with about 35 different council members, four presidents, three mayors, three auditors, three law directors, and I can say without reservation, I have nothing but the utmost respect for every person I've served with. They were all great. I enjoyed really every minute of it. I know sometimes it's hard to enjoy it when you're sitting over there, but I did. And just one nice, one nice thank you I would say, but I try to thank these people when they don't get thanked enough. All the volunteers that serve on the committees that we have, and they do a great job to assist our city, and I don't know where we'd be without them. Certainly I have to thank all the voters, that they were great. I enjoyed meeting all of them. And I said this before, and I will repeat it because it's true now, but it's true then. The City of Chillicothe has done far more for me than I could ever do for Chillicothe. So thank you, Godspeed to all of you, and keep up the good work. Thank you very much.
Anyone else like to address council this evening?
My name is William Blairard-Hart, and I live at 373 McCattler. And council's only had their work cut out to pass these two levies. I think in the last month, it's been in the paper where the woman at the fire department got a $9,400 a year raise. I think it comes out about $450 an hour, not bad a raise. And then, it's my understanding, the only time this building's in use is when it's council meetings. To me, that's wasted a lot of money. How could you ask the taxpayers to vote on a income tax levy when you waste money with this building? What are you going to do with the other money? Waste it, too?
Thank you, Mr. Barnhart. Anyone else?
My name is Terry Williams. I reside at 371 Flyley's Lane. I'm a proud resident and worker in the first ward. Thank you, Ms. Elanardo. We appreciate you taking on this task, particularly at such a difficult time for many of us here in the city. Our organization, Stand Up Chillicothe, is very frustrated, as you all are very well aware. We're very frustrated that it's taken so long to see a restoration of the EEO director position. We're very frustrated that it has taken so long to see any kind of resolution to this. We are very excited at this point that our EEO director is back working for the city. We think of that as a very good move. We applaud Mayor Everson for taking that action. But now the ball is in council's court. Council has the responsibility to fund that position, and from our perspective, council needs to make that a priority. We understand it's not an emergency. You don't run out of funding in the mayor's office for everybody until you hit about October, according to the auditor. But nonetheless, we think that it ought to be a priority for council to communicate how important this particular position is. We understand that the legislation will take some time to get it from the Law Director's Office to council. We would hope that when it does get ready in the Law Director's Office, that council would, with great haste, come to this chamber and pass that legislation. We feel that it's not unreasonable to ask that legislation be passed with a waiver of the three read rule. We sit here today looking at an agenda with seven first reading items, and all seven of them are going to be passed ostensibly with a request to pass the three read rule, to waive that rule, to suspend it, and allow it to go through. In the past six months, you've actually passed things with the three reading rule in the first or second read 36 times. A lot of very important things in that, grant funding for certain, quite a lot of money is allocated out up here as well. My personal favorite is the 30 bags of manure that we passed on the three read rule to accept from Walmart, a very good gift from a community service organization here, a company in our bounds. All of this process comes down to a question of priority. And if members of council feel that this is a priority, if members of council feel that funding EEO really is a priority in this community, members of council ought to make as much of an effort as possible to get this passed with a waiver of the three read rule. You have an opportunity to send a message to your citizens, many of whom, like me, are beginning to doubt your resolve. We want to give a lot of thanks to Mr. Showman, to Mr. Crowell, and to Ms. Gray, who have all committed to passing this as soon as it comes to council, making a request to pass under the three read rule, and supporting this legislation. We'd ask that the rest of you join them in that resolve. We'd ask that the rest of you would join them in making this a priority, not just something that can sit for three readings. The mayor has done his job, and it is time for council to act. We ask you to act as soon as you possibly can, get the legislation from the law director when it's ready, and pass it in this chamber. We're done with the games, we're done with the maneuvering. We would really appreciate it if you would do your part. Thank you.
My name is Jean Kearney, and I live at 340 Greenwood Drive. First of all, let me thank Mayor Everson for reconsidering and finding a way to bring back the EEO officer. And I know it wasn't an easy task, but he, but he did it. And it does take backbone to be sitting where you're sitting, and that is the reason why I think that we voted for you, those of us here in the city, because we thought that you had some backbone. I was very disappointed at the fact that even when the position was brought up, that no one in council said anything. No one spoke up and said, is there another way? The EEO position is not about Mrs. Lo, as far as I'm concerned. It is a position that 30 years ago, when I sat where you sat, that we fought and we prayed for to get. You have a real problem here in your city. You don't only need an EEO person, you need to do some EEO work. Three years ago, I got from the auditor's office a list of every minority employee that you have in this city, and you were really out of compliance. So you really need to think about how important that position can be if you put some teeth to it. And not just because of the fact that we are saying that you're supposed to have so many African-Americans. I don't think that way. I think in terms of the fact that diversity and difference of opinion in any department is very important. And the auditor's office, do we have an employee there? We have had a number of police officers who have left the city who are African-American. We have had a number of police officers who have left the city who are African-American. Have we had any recruited in that area to bring them, bring some in? When we talk about all the different things that happen in the community, it helps if we are able to work together, but it also helps if the children of this community can see someone who looks like them doing some of these jobs. And so, that's what it's really all about. And it was difficult for me to come and kind of express this tonight because I did not want it to appear that I was thinking in terms of black and white, but I'm thinking in terms of this whole community, of how we need you, I mean, City Council. I was also disappointed that I did not read in the paper, but not one of you spoke out when three or four young women came up missing in groups. I didn't see it in the paper where anyone spoke out that's connected with this community, that where mothers and the grandmothers could have seen that as a community, that this was a concern, not just of theirs, but of the poor people who are leading this community. So, I'm here tonight to actually not only think about the EEO position, but think about your power that you have and that has been given to you, to use your voice to make this a better community. Silence isn't always golden. Sometimes it's just period. And we need to use these voices of ours to make things better and to help the people. Yes, it is a difficult job, and I understand that. But when he brings to you that position, and then you find a way to get around it, he brings to you the fact that how it can be paid for, and then you stall on that position, then it sends a message to the community about how you think about what you need to do. Not about the person, because it's not about the person. It is about that position.
Dr. Kearney, you have thirty seconds.
All right, thank you very much. Again, Mayor, I'd like to thank you for what you have done in that position. I'd like to thank you for coming and visiting various events of the community from time to time, and some of you, because that's important. And I would like to invite the rest of you to not only use your voice, but use your steps and what have you, and let's make this a community of ones, and not just a community of those that you personally think deserve to be served.
Good evening. Tamara Lo, my address is 602 Garden Drive in Chillicothe. And I am not going to even pretend that I give behalf of the Speaker that Dr. Kearney is, so I'm just gonna read some of my notes. First, I would like to give my congratulations to President Eleanardo. As a woman in this community, it just makes me feel good to see you sitting there, so I know you're gonna, I believe you're gonna do a good job, and we can all stand behind you. I was going to talk to all of you a little bit this evening about the importance of EEO, the importance of EEO opportunity in our community, but I decided not to do so. I think to stand before you, a body of educated elected officials, and to explain the importance of EEO would or should insult your intelligence, because surely you already understand what EEO is. If you do not understand the importance of EEO, I would say shame on you. If you understand the importance of EEO and still choose not to support the funding of a position of EEO in this community, understanding the importance of it, then again, I would say shame on you. When the EEO position was ripped from the 2015 budget by Mayor Jack Everson, this council, by its silence and inaction, endorsed the abolishment of civil rights programming, EEO, diversity, and fair housing programming in this city. At that time, I appealed the layoff because I did not believe that the lack of funds could be substantiated by the administration. Shortly after I filed my appeal and after a very public outcry, the funds were found in the budget, and Mayor Jack Everson recalled me back to work. On the afternoon of January 29, I withdrew my appeal with the Chillicothe Civil Service Commission with the agreement that I would be made hold. I withdrew that appeal with the strong belief that the hearing would have yielded the same results and didn't fill the need for, to bring people out to such an appeal hearing. That agreement states that the appointing authority has access to funds sufficient to compensate me on my reinstated position as EEO director through the balance of 2015. I believed, strongly believed at that time, on that date when I withdrew my appeal, that that agreement was made in good faith by Mayor Jack Everson through the city's attorney. There were no contingencies that the position's funding would be subjugated to funding of positions which this council found to be more desirable. There were no contingencies that my position would be funded only after Sergeant Tom Cunningham retires and an officer is recalled to replace him. Yet, here we are. I'm in a position where I'm expected to remain in limbo while some members of this council play the shell game with the public. I have no idea with this limited funding if I'm a full-time employee until those funds run out sometime this year, when the funding was only allocated to pay for my unemployment for this year, or am I a part-time employee through the end of 2015? I've been given no direction in that area. Again, I remain in limbo. A few of you have publicly stated here in the HR committee that you'd rather hire another police officer. At least a few of you has taken to, or at least one of you has taken to social media in an effort to discredit the position of EEO and have attempted to pit, to pit EEO and me personally against law enforcement in this community at a time when drugs and crime are rampant, yet so are racial issues and civil rights issues and housing issues. Some of you have led or attempted to lead the public to believe that this is an either-or situation, EEO or police officer, a police officer or EEO. Are we to believe that if someone in this community has a heart attack, God forbid dies, God forbid a house burns down, that there's another shooting, or that someone is critically injured, that I, Tamara Lo, am to blame because I have a job? That if I had stayed home and continued to draw an unemployment check from the city, that our city would have been safer than if I had returned to work? That is both untrue and unfair. You will not pit me against my coworkers in safety and protective services. I don't believe that they will allow you to pit them against me. Many of these people are my friends. They've been my coworkers for many years. Any attempt to divide and conquer will be fruitless. Please stop the shell game. I ask you to take immediate and appropriate action in fully funding the EEO positions for the remainder of 2015. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lo. I think that three five-minute speakers on the EEO topic satisfies the fifteen minutes to be devoted to that subject. Are there, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the council on a different topic? Seeing none, then we'll go on to old business. Repeating in the way of old business from the council members. Seeing none. Petitions and correspondence received by the clerk.
Madam President, Eleanardo, I did receive a letter from Abel Akers of Walbrook Development Company in reference to a development of thirty-two units of new construction of affordable housing for the elderly proposed to be located by them in Chillicothe at 960 Toledo Street and Columbus Street in Chillicothe. And there is a timeframe for comments to be submitted within thirty days of notice, and the notice is dated February 4. And that has been distributed to all members of council. That's all I have. Madam President.
New business. Seeing no new business. Many assignments and meeting dates, and I apologize if they are too many to announce.
President Ken Tratchell gave me a list, and these are assignments that he has made. And I'm not sure all of those have been announced to the council members yet, so we'll all have a copy.
Everyone has a copy.
Everyone does have a copy of.
Is there any reason for me to read these aloud?
Probably from the audience, but...
All right, I'm happy to do that. Assignment T-15-02 to finance for street and alley paving levy. Assignment T-15-03 to finance for safety levy. Assignment T-15-04 to human resources to adopt a part-time pay increase as negotiated with the ASME union. Assignment T-15-05 to engineering updating city sign ordinances. Assignment T-15-06 to human resources to appropriate funding for the EEO administrator position for the remainder of the calendar year 2015. Assignment T-15-07 to finance appropriate additional funds in the amount of $650 to cover the cost of a new truck bed. Assignment T-15-08 to utilities to look into requiring the advertiser and any other unsolicited newspaper to require a firm phone number so that residents will have the opportunity to request non-delivery. Assignment T-15-09 to Community Affairs Committee to request a look into farm animal regulations within city limits and a possible ban of farm animals on city property. Assignment T-15-10 to Parks and Rec, a resolution granting use of the city park and surrounding streets for the annual feast of the flower and moon. And Assignment T-15-11 to Engineering to add language to the current parking ordinance that would allow the police to ticket vehicles that have been parked in front or side yards where there is no driveway or curb cut. Okay? It's quite the, quite the risk, Tom, thank you. That takes us to legislation. All right. Item one.
Third reading of an ordinance authorizing the installation of a streetlight at the intersection of Johnson Road and Keller Road. Third reading.
And we'll call the call.
Tratchell, yes. Patton, yes. Showman.
Yes.
Prohl.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Ames.
And the ordinance passes. Item number two.
Third reading, providing for the adoption of post-issuance compliance policies and procedures for tax-exempt obligations. Third reading.
Roll call.
Tratchell.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Showman.
Yes.
Prohl.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Ames.
Yes.
And the ordinance passes. Item number four.
First reading of an ordinance accepting and appropriating an insurance claim payment in the amount of $19,655.24 received for damage to the roof at the Donald M. Smith Memorial Pool Building and declaring emergency. First reading.
For the state in my report, I'd like to make a motion to waive the three-read rule.
Is there a second? I saw Mrs. Gray. Mrs. Gray's hand is up. We'll have a roll call on the motion to waive the three-read rule.
Tratchell.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Showman.
Yes.
Prohl.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Ames.
Yes.
Motion is approved, and now we'll have a roll call on the ordinance.
Tratchell.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Showman.
Yes.
Prohl.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Ames.
Yes.
Ordinance is approved. Item number five.
First reading of an ordinance accepting and appropriating $1,000 in grant funds received from the David Need Massey Trust and declaring emergency. First reading.
Mr. Prohl.
At this time, I would request that we please waive the three-read rule.
Second by Mr. Tratchell. Roll call on the motion to waive the three-read rule.
Tratchell.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Showman.
Yes.
Prohl.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Ames.
Yes.
Ordinance passes. Item number six.
First reading of an ordinance authorizing and directing the Safety Service Director to advertise for bids and enter into contracts for annual supplies and maintenance and repair of the equipment required by the City of Chillicothe, Ohio, for fiscal year 2015 and declaring emergency. First reading.
Mr. Prohl.
This time, I'd like to request that we please waive the three-read rule.
Second by Mrs. Ames. Roll call on the motion to waive the three-read rule.
Tratchell.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Showman.
Yes.
Prohl.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Ames.
Yes.
Ordinance passes. Item number seven.
First reading of an ordinance appropriating and transferring the sum of $650 to cover the cost of a new truck bed for use within street construction and declaring emergency. First reading.
Mr. Tratchell.
Thank you, President Eleanardo. At this time, I'd like to request a waive the three-read rule.
Second by Mr. Prohl. Roll call on the motion to waive the three-read rule.
Tratchell.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Showman.
Yes.
Prohl.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Ames.
Yes.
Motion passes. We'll have a roll call on the ordinance.
Tratchell.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Showman.
Yes.
Prohl.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Ames.
Yes.
Motion passes. We'll have a roll call on the ordinance.
Tratchell.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Showman.
Yes.
Prohl.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Ames.
Yes.
And the ordinance passes. And the motion passes. Now, we'll have a roll call on the ordinance.
Tratchell.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Showman.
Yes.
Prohl.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Ames.
Yes.
And the ordinance passes. And the motion passes. Now, we'll have a roll call on the ordinance.
Tratchell.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Showman.
Yes.
Prohl.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Ames.
Yes.
And now, the ordinance has passed. Item number nine.
First reading of an ordinance authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $320,000 refuse vehicle acquisition bonds for the purpose of paying certain notes issued for the purpose of paying the cost of acquiring two garbage trucks, together with all necessary appurtenances thereto, and declaring emergency. First reading.
Mrs. Neal, I'd like to request a waive the three-read rule.
Roll call on the motion to waive the three-read rule.
Tratchell?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Showman?
Yes.
Crowell?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Ames?
Yes.
And the motion has passed. We will have a roll call on the ordinance.
Tratchell?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Showman?
Yes.
Crowell?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Ames?
Yes.
And the ordinance has passed. Item number ten.
First reading of an ordinance consolidating two bond issues of the City of Chillicothe, Ohio, and declaring emergency. First reading.
Mrs. Patrick, I'd like to make a motion to waive the three-read rule. Is there a second? Second by Mrs. Gray. Roll call on the motion to waive the three-read rule.
Tratchell?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.